Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. We are out of our second executive session. This is cremation for case number 24-JL-050. Total cost of the cremation is $1,675. Do I have a motion to approve this expense?
Chairman, I would move that we approve the expense of $1,675 for case number 24-JL-050. Is that the correct number?
Yeah, okay.
Second. A motion and a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Can we all three sign this? You have the ballot. It's all I can print out for you, Mr. Chairman. You want to do that?
Oh, you got a bunch of blueberries.
I have some.
I have blueberries on my cherryos this morning. I need nut cherryos. Nut cherryos. They're my favorite, buddy. Don't make fun of my nut cherryos.
No carbs, no sugar there.
Oh, I gotta say, it's good for your heart. It says it's right on the box.
The blueberries.
I like granola and yogurt.
Oh, that's so good. Granola and yogurt, oh.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is the cast.
Next to enter Tom Mary.
To vote and sign the ballot for the Boise County Board of Health, Representative Commissioner Clay Tucker to the Central District Health.
Is that the one you said we didn't get to interview or anything?
No, he's the county commissioner. He's actually the chairman of the board for Boise County. He serves with me.
That means he's not trustworthy at all.
Yeah, he was.
So you know this guy?
And he's, yeah, he's a great guy. He's a new commissioner. I'm surprised you didn't meet him down at Hou Falls. I don't know, maybe he didn't go.
There wasn't anybody there.
Boise County is one of the counties, the county of four.
Not a lot of people there. Back in Grangeville, it was the furthest north that people in Idaho Falls showed up.
Nobody from North Idaho?
Nobody from North Idaho showed up.
Expensive to fly in there.
Oh, my gosh. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we... How do I do this, Doug? Am I nominating him?
Approve the nomination.
Approve the nomination of Boise County for Clay Tucker, Commissioner Clay Tucker, to the Central District Board of Health.
Oh, second half.
You got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Doug is going to print out the ballot and we will sign it when he gets it.
And again, I provide feedback. I think it's crazy that we have to do this.
Yeah, I'll tell anyone, but this is state.
One of the most controversial, I know, one of the most controversial decisions I made was for the Central District Health.
And it's for our representative. I don't know if we have any authority over the other counties, but... Okay, so we have about 15 minutes until our next agenda item. So we're going to go mute and we'll see everybody back here at 3 o'clock. Back on?
Mr. Chairman, we are back on.
Welcome back, everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. Our next agenda item is not an action item. This is just an update on the Shepherd's Home. Mark DeYoung, pleasure to see you again. Appreciate all you've done for that facility and for Valley County. And I'll just turn it over to you.
Sounds great. So, yeah, I am Mark DeYoung. I've been on the Board of Directors for 17 years. And I'm here today just to give you guys an update on what we've been doing the last year and kind of make a request for you guys to continue being partners with us and helping us succeed in our mission. And I've got a little bit of paperwork I want to...
Come on, huh?
It's just a short overview of last year and bednights and the kids we had. And there's a website you can jump on when you have time, if you have time. It's a pretty good little... It's a little bit about Shepherd's Home with Dottie Bacy. It takes about five minutes, but it's very...
Look that over. Is the website on here?
Yeah, it is. It is right there.
Thank you, sir. Good.
Good. How are you? Good to see you.
Look that over a little bit. And I'll explain a few things to you. As you guys probably know, you know, the foster system in the state of Idaho is in dire straits. We've always got kids, you know, coming and leaving. Sometimes they'll be there three days. They can be there, you know, through high school. We just have a lot of rotation all the time with the kids that come. And we provided almost 1,800 bednights in 2023 for kids. And we had quite a few kids that were... We had some kids that were special needs, which are a little more challenging. You know, they don't have a place to go, but they also have some disabilities. So we've got really good house parents who've done a fantastic job. And we've made some improvements this year. We... One of the things I think you guys, you know, you can read down there. But one thing we're working on this year, we've got a couple of programs we're going to have in place here probably by fall. And one of them is we're picking up a set of house... They're going to be respite house parents. So there are going to be another couple that works with the Shepherd's Home to give the house parents time off, weekends, a night off, whatever. Help them, whatever they need help. And sometimes they need quite a bit of help with the kids, school things, whatever, traveling to Boise. But we're going to, we're going to set that up and we're going to... We're working on the details, but the idea is to have this house couple... This respite couple will be our new house parents when the time evolves. When we move on, we'll have a set of people ready to come in and take over. And the house parents, we have now been there three years. You know, they're great, but, you know, on a cycle, it's a two-year, you know, two years usually even good house parents. They, you know, it's a high-stress position, right? It has all those kids have baggage and it's a lot of work. But what we're going to set up is we've got two things going and it's an important thing. And it's important for you guys to understand. We have a, we have a system now, so we have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week emergency placement for a child in the... So if it's, if it's the middle of the night, and we talked about this last time I was down, if there's the middle of the night and the police are taking to someone's home and maybe it's a domestic dispute or whatever it is. But there's never a question about where those kids can go. They can always go to the Shepherd's Home. We have a designated room for the emergency placement kids. And there's a lot of restrictions involved in it. And, but we can always take the kids and we can work with health and welfare within a 24-hour period. They want to be involved in anything that happens. And, but when we have this... So within 24 to 72 hours, we've got a... The kids need to be separated from the rest of the kids in the home. There's a, there's a pretty good set of restrictions on how we can keep them in the home. And with this new set of respite parents, we're going to have a separate facility. It'll either be an apartment or, you know, even if it's the place they live now, we'll stifle their rent. We'll do something to, to get them on board with what we're doing. And they'll always be a place for those... That's what, they'll have a room designated just for those kids. And when, you know, right now, we can make it happen, but we're going to make it happen even better. And that way, those kids will always, even if they're there for four or five days, and the way health and welfare works, it can be that long before, you know, they get involved, they want to find out where the kids have been, where they're going. But it takes time. And, but I think it's important for you guys to know and the sheriff to know and the citizens of Call that anytime we need emergency placement, we provide it, okay? For kids. And, you know, so, you know, years, it wasn't that long ago, two or three years ago, our hands were kind of tied on that. And we got into a little bit of a... We're still in a gray area with health and welfare, and I think we'll always be in one. We work with them directly all the time. But I think that this is a big step and we're just trying to make better, bigger steps for kids that need help, right?
That was one of the questions we had is we did remember that, you know, health and welfare had to place those kids. And so our local kids were not allowed to go in there. And that's, I'm afraid to say that's changed.
And that can take a week, right? But I think that the main thing is, and Kelly's on our board now, and she is...
Ellie.
Upary. Yeah. Kevin's wife.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but I think it's important for you guys to know and that we are expanding our reach and our abilities to take care of emergency placement, no matter when, no matter what time. And we can do it now. It's a little more complicated, but I think here by fall, you know, we'll have a pretty streamlined program for that. And you can look through and see the improvements we made. You know, we got a grant for $32,000. We put a privacy fence around the home, 580 feet of fence, I think. And it's, you know, it's more to protect the kids. You know, we have a big playground area out there for them, but we've been working on it for two years because we really, you know, in this day and age, you just, you know, with all the people that are coming here, you just don't know how safe those kids are anymore. You know, in the yard.
Well, they deserve privacy too, if they're going through stress.
Yeah.
Mark, and I don't remember what the answer was. Is there an age limit on kids that can go in?
No, you know, we've had newborns right out of the hospital. We have right up into 18. And at 18, we either encourage them to, you know, we've got some scholarship money through a few different resources. And we try and encourage them and help them move on to transition into going to a trade school or going to college. And we've had several kids who've graduated from the home and graduated from high school and gone on to lead pretty productive lives.
Remember, if they go to a community college, they get $3,000. Alls they have to do is ask the county for $3,000 scholarship.
What's that, Sherry?
It's if high school, if anyone wants to go to like CWI, there's five different colleges they can go through in the state. They get $3,000 toward their college tuition.
Yeah.
It's $500 a semester, but it's something.
Yeah, no, it all helps.
Those they have to do is show they've lived here.
We keep children up until 18. And we never send them down the road. We make sure that even if they have to stay for six months or whatever, we make sure that they have a place to go before they leave.
I guess my final question, I see in your letter, you're asking for a little bit more, which I think is understandable. My question is, how is the reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid, all that stuff? Is that pretty easy or has that been a challenge?
No, it's a complicated system, you know, but it all works. You know, we have an administrator and between the house parents and the administrator, we reimburse, you know, whatever we do with the children, even if, even if it's a... You know, we have a 12-person, 12-passenger van. And, you know, a lot of times those kids are reunited with their parents on the weekends, you know, because the whole idea is to get them to be back with their families. And, you know, we'll take the kids to Boise, we'll take the kids to Pocatillo. But the state, through health and welfare, reimburses us on all that. And they reimburse us, the childcare, the cost per child is reimbursed through the state. is open. We've been in business for twenty-five years, and it's all grants and donations. And that's how we run.
So do we get kids from out of county, from other counties?
We take them from all over. Yeah.
All over?
Yep. Yep. And we, you know, I mean, we're, we, it's all dependent on the child, the situation, their age, how many we have in the home, and if the house parents can take another one, they take them. Now, we're, we get called every day almost, you know, because there's just not enough. I mean, I'm sure you guys have researched just a little bit. I think a lot of kids are shipped to Montana and Wyoming, that could be because Idaho doesn't have a place for them, foster kids, you know. So.
Mark, another question.
Yeah.
You're seeing a lot more, we're seeing a lot more funding due to the opioid crisis. There's a lot of settlements with pharmacies over the years, and that money has been pretty stable. Do you see a lot of opioid issues in, not from the kids, but from their parents?
You know, it's, 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 every, every case is different. And, you know, some, some are maybe, some can be drug-related, some can be other things, you know. But, you know, as far as, you know, the real problems with the parents, we don't, we don't follow that much. We, we, we're guided by the state as to when we can, they can have visitation rights, they can see the kids for the weekend. And, and like I say, their, their goal is to get the parents back on track and get the kids back home with their parents.
And that's, that's admirable. I think that's good. The kind of the basis of my question was that we have, we're going to get to a point, I think, in a few years, that we're going to need places to spend that.
Yeah.
Money, and it's got to be a subsidies opioid kind of an issue. You know, we're, we're.
Got to be programmed to educate or something, doesn't it? I don't know.
I think, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're always taking the next step forward and trying to cover our bases to make it a better, bigger home and take care of more kids. And I think we've made, I mean, I've been on the board a long time, and I think the last five years have just been like, you know, we've really made some, some major steps. And, you know, a lot of it is, you know, I'm the maintenance guy, right? And I've done, you know, twenty-five years of wear and tear. That place needs some attention. But, you know, it's in good shape. And, you know, next year, we want to put windows and new windows in, new siding, and put a new roof on three years ago. And some guys have done roofs for me, donated the whole thing.
Oh, that's nice.
No, it's been great. So we, and, and on the other side, we're, we're making big steps, you know, we're, we're just, we're always trying to be more progressive. And, you know, we've got a lot of new board members with a lot of new ideas, you know. I'm kind of the old dog in the pack, and I am.
You're the history.
I can't.
You're the intelligent one.
You're the history, but I'll.
You know, I want to be there till, I mean, I feel like I'm a pretty good, I, I'm there, I'm good, I'm glad I'm there right now. Yeah, I am. Yeah.
Remember when John Koch put those in?
What's that?
Remember when John Koch put those in for Bill and Dottie?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I go way back, right?
That was way back. I remember wired all that up for them. It's like, I had no idea that's what, that was really going to turn into.
Yeah. No, I mean, back in the day when it started, I mean, I was there too. It's, I mean, look at where we are, you know.
Got a vision.
We could be twice as big, you know, but we can't do that right now.
You guys work with, like, Tracy and Ignite Idaho and Yak and some of those other organizations?
You know, we're tied into just about every organization, Neil. I mean, my, you know, we've got, we've got our feelers out, and we've, we are, we're tied into just about everybody, you know. And one, you know, whatever, it's kind of like a big, big group throughout the state, and everybody helps everybody in this. You know, we learn a lot from other, other places. Yeah.
It's good. It's good.
But I, I mean, it's all good news today, guys, you know. If we could have a little more help, it'd be great. And.
No promises. We have a really tight budget this year.
You know, no promises, but good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mark, for coming in and giving it your time.
No.
Surely take it under advisement, see what we can do.
Thanks for your time, you guys.
Good seeing you.
Keep up the good work.
Take care, bud.
Okay. Phil, I'll see you before you call it quits, huh?
Well, I'm not going to quit. I'm just going to fade away.
No, I know.
I'm going to let these guys know when they're screwing up.
He's going to leave me a three-ring grinder of all his knowledge.
Better take it home for a while.
Yeah. I don't have that much knowledge.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is Valley County, Valley-Solo Water Controversial District.
I apologize for interrupting. Can you just give me two minutes? I'll give you a minute and a half.
See if I'm loose.
Oh, you got somebody online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who do we have coming on?
Janet Cherry from ERG.
ERG?
ERG.
ERG.
Bring my notes.
Did you see that face? ERG, it's got to be something, environmental research group.
There she is. Hello, Janet.
Can you hear us?
I can. Thank you.
Good. Well, welcome. Welcome. This is a next agenda item. It's an action item. Valley-Solo Water Controversial District update and the selection of Cascade for the Closing America's Wastewater Access Gap Technical Assistance Grant. That's a lot of words. Anyway, welcome. Whoever wants to take the lead, I'll turn it over to you.
And explain what it is.
So you want to go first, Janet? First of all, tell me what ERG stands for.
Let me do just a little bit of an introduction first, because it came prompted from, mostly from the commissioners requesting, how can we get South Lake to move forward? What, what, how can we, what steps do we have to take to move that forward? And it's something that we, as a district, have asked ourselves over and over. This is a group of volunteers that's on that board. Most of them are from the Boise area that come up. I don't know how they could be expected to move something forward. They have, you are. I don't mean that.
Larry's on that board too?
Larry is on the board.
That's what I thought.
So it's just something that it seemed like it was a big issue that was affecting water quality as far as everything that we were seeing. And across my email came a, just an email from, with this information about this grant. And it was just an online questionnaire, and it felt like it just fell right in with what we were, information we were receiving from IDEQ and from the septic pumping program. And so just completed that application and was contacted by Janet, and we just had more dialogue back and forth, included dialogue with the district and with.
So functionally, what will?
DEQ and, excuse me?
Functionally, what will this grant do?
I'll let Janet talk to this, but essentially, it's technical assistance, no cost to us, no match requirements. So it just seemed like a perfect tool to be able to gain information and next steps for how we can move forward with that South Lake district.
Hey, Janet, you're up.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Darina. I'll answer the most critical question. ERG, that stands for Eastern Research Group. We're a nationwide firm. The main office is located outside of Boston, and then we have other larger offices near Washington DC. I'm fortunate enough to live and work out of my home here in Olympia, Washington. ERG is a, an EPA contractor, and we are helping EPA as they implement the Closing America's Wastewater Access Gap Initiative. So this initiative, this program started two years ago under a pilot program. They're using, EPA is using the recently appropriated funding from Congress under the bipartisan infrastructure law to help small disadvantaged systems access funding for infrastructure improvements. So as Darina mentioned, we are able to provide technical assistance at no cost to the district. I want to be clear, we do not have the funding for the infrastructure improvements, but we will help the district, I should say, the sewer district, South Lake Recreational Water and Sewer District. We can assist them with putting together funding applications. At least one funding application needs to be submitted to the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. But the goal of this program is to help areas where there are failing or substandard onsite systems that are causing environmental or public health issues. And I think you have both occurring in the area with the Cascade Reservoir having harmful algal blooms during the warmer temperature months, along with impacts to a number of the private wells in the area. As Darina mentioned, she submitted an application to EPA for this free technical assistance. It was reviewed by myself and the staff at EPA, and it was accepted into the program. We had a great meeting with the South Lake Recreational Water and Sewer District just this past Friday evening. They do have an engineering firm under contract, Keller and Associates. We are more than willing to collaborate and work with Keller and Associates. We're not here to take work away from Keller and Associates, but if there's any way we can help with this project, we are certainly willing to do that. So, um, so I'll stop there. If there are any questions, if you want more details on this program and want to hear more about our technical assistance services we can provide.
Janet, this is Commissioner Hasbrook. And correct me if I'm wrong, Darina, because I don't know a lot of the history of South Lake Sewer, but they've already formed a district. They've already voted that in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So Janet, will you be able to help with, like, part of the technical stuff, is the estimated cost, you know, this is how big it needs to be, all those really kind of details that I think this group has hung up on? And then, is there like any elections or is there a process where those people are allowed to vote on that? I don't know the process.
Right. So, yes, we can put together what's called a preliminary engineering report. I am a currently registered professional engineer in the state of Washington, and I can obtain reciprocity in Idaho. I've not done that yet, but I can. So I can stamp the preliminary engineering report and submit it to the funding agency, or willing to work with Keller and Associates if they want to take lead on any, like, Gray, the gentleman from Keller and Associates who attended the Water and Sewer District meeting this past Friday. He mentioned their, the way they're scoping the project, they want to start with a feasibility study, which makes all kinds of sense, to start looking at just what you mentioned, Commissioner, looking at where pipelines would go, the size, what needs to be done. And they, Keller and Associates conducted this study back in 2002 and looked at providing centralized sewer to this area and conveying it to the city of Cascade. So some of that work already exists. I think that Keller and Associates plans to revisit their previous work and update it based on more current information. I'm guessing there's been some more build-out in the area since 2002, so they would have to look at what the new flow rates are for the current level of occupancy and develop lots that exist. So yes, we can do that. We can help with public outreach. That's going to be very important here, talking to the, the residents, trying to convey the importance of this project and why it's a benefit to the residents to connect to the sewer and become part of a centralized sewer system versus keeping their onsite systems. And then we can also help with conversations between the sewer district and city of Cascade as we consider what this regional project looks like and what improvements city of Cascade would have to undertake to expand their wastewater treatment plant to accept this increased load from the South Lake area.
So Janet, what I'm hearing is this is more of a planning grant. You will help with the planning phase of things. Keller and Associates could actually do the engineering portion of it, but then there'll also have to be a grant writer. And is that something that, you know, your firm does, grant writing for the larger construction grants, or?
Yes, we could do that. And then we can bring in other TA providers. I know Rural Community Assistance Corporation is currently helping the sewer district. I was a little surprised not to see them at the meeting Friday. But they're already under contract to help. So either we could do it, the firm I work for, ERG, or we could assist Rural Community Assistance Corporation, RCAC, another technical assistance provider with doing that. So between the two of us, we could definitely do whatever it takes to get the funding application together, which I know is a lot, to assemble all of the application materials and information to submit a full funding package. So yes, we can do that.
It sounds like South Lake is already moving forward. I mean, they already had a lot of this done. So do they need this grant? I'm a little confused because I, I think there's speaking, or we're talking on footprints.
But I did, this is like a golden opportunity.
Yeah, it is.
What they can fill in, what, what Keller and Associates cannot. You know, I don't think the South Lake district has a very deep pocketbook that they can cover all of that.
So they haven't gotten a grant to do this already?
No.
This grant would actually allow them the opportunity to expand the reach.
Yes.
It's just, it's going to take that, I think, over there at this time.
Yeah. Aunt Keller is, relax, I'm a board member. Aunt Keller is contracted to do right now is the feasibility study. And part of the feasibility study that we asked them to look at, one of the most important parts, roadblock all these years, because we're talking fifteen hundred lots with less than twenty to thirty full-time occupants, lot occupied. We needed to team up with the city of Cascade to do it, and that was the roadblock for years. Now, that has changed in the last two months. Now, the city of Cascade, we think are, has gotten on board and is interested. And so Keller is going to make that connection for us.
That's perfect.
And then.
We've been asking for a while to have.
So a question on that, because that's always been the gist and the best, or the block is Cascade taking that extra, that's flowing on. And now we're seeing a lot of treatment plans like Evermore, where it's all in-house in a building. Is this study going to say, you know, it would be better to do it this way than to send it to Cascade? Is that going to be part of that?
Absolutely. Yes, we've had those discussions.
Because I, I really liked that, the treatment of Evermore. I mean, it's amazing how much effluent they handle every day, and they're doing a great job.
Yes.
I am very excited to hear that something is moving forward and that this is going to be resolved. Janet, I don't know if you were made aware, but last year, we had a major wildfire. Last year? Two years ago now.
Two years.
And there was about four hundred and fifty homes put at risk. And if they would have burnt, which was a large portion of our workforce, those homes would not have been able to get septic systems put back into place. We would have lost a huge area of local housing. And so I think that that's a conversation that, with that freshening people's minds, you know, your home would have burnt. You could not have gotten it replaced. That's a huge conversation to have with the community, so that they understand the importance of doing this.
So Darina, this is an action item. Are you looking for a vote from us to proceed or accept this grant, or what are you looking for?
To be willing to participate in the process.
Oh.
Oh.
So if there's nothing, so you're aware of it.
You have a quiet voice. You wanna go to the mic? Sorry.
Thought you were pointing it there.
Oh.
I do this one.
What we're asking for is a vote from you to participate in this grant and work with South Lake and Valley Soil and Water and Keller Associates, just as part, and city of Cascade, to know that this is happening and, and-
Participate at what level? And, I mean, we're all kind of busy. So are you asking us to head a conversation? Are you asking us to financially support?
No.
Just be involved?
No financial support. Just, just be aware of it as part of the community moving forward with sewer district solutions.
Do we need a letter of support?
No, we have the grant.
Yeah. Well, that's true. Next round, we probably will, but yeah.
So we're just, we've had the meeting with South Lake and Janet came to our board meeting and we discussed it. And this was, the next step was to get the county commissioners on board with it.
It's a huge step.
Oh man, I, I think we're behind 112%. This is, it's interesting because we have a lot of land use control over there, but we don't have a lot of control over septic systems, you know, that's, and with the Health District and another agency, and they contract with DEQ to do that service. And so it's been kind of a no man's land as far as the county commissioners are involved in. And I, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, it's energy to push this. It takes energy from people like, you know, the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, the folks that live there. And it's gonna be a lot of work. But we, I feel myself, I'm 110% behind it, whatever we can do. Janet, is there anything else you want to add? Anything else you want to say before we ask for a motion?
No, I think that's great. Once we are able to better define how we can support, we being ERG and EPA support, the sewer district and Keller and Associates will have a more defined scope. But yeah, just want you to know that we plan to be part of this project. It's funded by EPA. Again, no match required, no cost to anybody at all. And we're just willing to collaborate to make this successful. This, this is a big project. And just interested if the county, as we talk about a regional project, if there's any need to look at other areas beyond South Lake. I mean, I know that's big enough when you talk about providing centralized sewer for 1,200 homes. That's huge. It'll be in phases. It's a multi-year project. But just being thoughtful as you're laying pipe and going by other areas within the county before we hit the city limits and the wastewater treatment plant, just what other areas we might need to be aware of that could benefit from this regional effort.
Well, I think that's a really good point, Janet, because I know a good, many of the folks in the city limits of Cascade up on the lake, kind of, you know, a west-facing ridge are in the sewer district, but they don't have sewer. It was never provided by the city of Cascade. There's also about 550 acres that are generally south of this, kind of south of the Gulf Coast. On the east side of the lake that has been for sale for quite a few years, that I'm sure eventually somebody was gonna probably develop that as well. That'll have to go to the Cascade sewer system. So I think those are the, some of the things you probably should know about. I know there's, I don't know how many lots there, that I already have homes on them now that are on the sewer system that are supposed to be part of the district that don't have that capability yet. So when we're looking at design and size and all that stuff, I'm sure you guys will keep that in mind.
Right. Okay. And then also, would the county want to be part of the new regional entity that could possibly be the outcome here?
What does that entail? What do you mean, like, being on the board or something like that?
Right, right. That you would be part of the governing body.
I'm, I can't vote for myself because I'm not gonna be on the board at the end of the year. I'm retiring. So you're gonna have to ask these two.
Okay. I, I don't need an answer right now, but just something to think about as we talk about what this new enti, regional entity could look like. There's many ways to form the regional entity. I think I heard at the sewer board meeting Friday evening that a joint powers board had been considered in the past. But yeah, just-
Well, and I think the county could be involved more on the land planning issue over there because that ground was subdivided pre-planning and zoning years in the late 60s. And they were all quarter acre lots or even smaller. And at that, before, like I say, before planning and zoning, now we've got a lot of orders to place where that just doesn't, that's not possible. They need more to do unless the sewer is put in first. And so we could maybe be an influence on the land use over there, those kind of issues as far as right-ofaways, county, using county right-ofaways for sewer lines, that kind of stuff. That would be certainly a part of it as well.
I don't see holding a seat, to be honest with you. Every board that we serve on serves the entire county, not one specific region.
Got it.
And so we have like 20 boards we serve on, and all of them have either a footprint statewide or countywide. So I, I just, I don't see us having a place on the board, but being fully in support and informed-
Okay.
-is critical, but.
Well, and I would assume too that it, to get to a point down the road in X amount of years, that we need more heavier ordinances to try and encourage that people join the district or people, that's where we would come in, is the fact that, no, we're not gonna let you do these quarter acre lots anymore. You've gotta have it sewer and watered and all that's gotta be in place first. And we've done a lot of that since, but.
I would like to see where the breakpoint is. I mean, do you guys touch the, on the north, do you touch the boundary of North Lake? Is it contiguous with North?
No, there's miles between North Lake and South Lake.
Well, and-
And it's all four states.
That's probably where we need to have the conversation is, and then make sure that we're covering the footprint as large as we can, so that there isn't a gap. Just like the fire districts don't touch, there's a gap in the middle and that doesn't make sense long-term.
And that's why it's really important that we have your participation is for those little, little parts that-
Absolutely.
-information. Our next step with everyone, we're doing an informal lunch or on the 23rd or the 25th. I haven't sent out a polling email yet, but it'd be really great. It'll just be informal, a chance Janet will be down. Janet, who from your team, who else will be there?
I don't know. Once the date's set, I'll see who else can attend, but I will definitely attend.
Okay.
Go ahead, Darina.
Oh, I was just gonna say, in our discussion, that's more for the people involved in, in building the system. But our biggest challenge is gonna be education and getting the word out and getting everybody on board. And that's gonna be the big job involved in the, in the first phase of this thing.
Okay. Well, if we're all good, oh, Darina, go ahead.
Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the tasks that ERG can help with, is that public outreach. So.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I would entertain a motion up or down on this?
As Mr. Chairman, I would move that we stand in support of the expansion and hopefully completion of the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District's grant process with the Closing America's Wastewater Access Gap Technical Assistance Grant in support of the South Lake Sewer and Water District. I do it.
That should work.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion in a second. Before we vote, if you guys need a letter of support from us, that's whatever you need from us. I know Janet's here, she's here to, you know, firsthand. But if you do need a letter of support, please let us know. Okay? We've got a motion in a second to support the, this grant application. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I guess the grant's already been given, so therefore we don't need it at this point, but maybe in the future if we have funding needs then we'll-
As we move into the outreach.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
But thank you and have a great day.
All right.
All right. We'll see you in it soon.
Yes, we'll see you soon. Thank you. Bye.
Darina, you're gonna send us the invite for the lunch and all that? Okay?
I won't be there that week. 3/26, I'm out.
Do it as soon as you can so we can get it scheduled. There's a lot going on.
A lot going on.
Of July.
Yes.
You guys will need to-
All right. Thanks, you guys. Thanks for coming up. Being no public out in the foyer and no, presented to the commissioners, there's nothing else on our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.